Welcome back to our Acts of the Apostles Bible Study. My name is Chase Lohlinger. Today, we're going to be covering Acts, Chapter 1, verses thirteen through twenty-six. Before we begin, let's have a brief prayer and then we can dig in. In the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Holy Spirit, be with us as we study your word today. Help us to more fully appreciate your will for our lives. Come into our minds as we study, our lips as we proclaim your gospel, and in our hearts as we truly make them our own. We ask this through Christ our Lord, through the goodness of God, the Father, amen. Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. All right, let's start. So we start off with verse thirteen in chapter one, and it goes as such. "When they entered the city, they went to the upper room where they were staying, Peter and John, and James and Andrew, Philip and Thomas, Bartholomew and Matthew, James, son of Alpheus, Simon the Zealot, and Judas, son of James. All these devoted themselves with one accord, together with some women, and Mary, the mother of Jesus, and his brothers." We'll start off with Acts 1, verse thirteen. "When they entered the city, they went to the upper room where they were staying, Peter and John, James and Andrew, Philip and Thomas, Bartholomew and Matthew, James, son of Alpheus, Simon the Zealot, and Judas, son of James." There's two things to note here. The first one is the upper room. As you might remember in our last session with Drew, the apostles were up on the Mount of Olives, or Mount Olivet, and they traveled a Sabbath journey. Usually, that was considered one mile, give or take, and that was the amount that you were able to journey on the Sabbath. The upper room that we see here is something that we're going to see both in the past and in the future. This is the same upper room that they used for the Last Supper, where Jesus instituted the Eucharist. This will also be the same room that we see in Pentecost, coming up in our next session with Drew. The upper room was considered by some scholars to be part of the house of Saint Mark's mother. So it was someone that knew the early apostles and, you know, offered this space for them in which to pray and worship God. Secondly, you see a list of the apostles, and you'll notice that it's kind of in pairs. And these are witnessing pairs. In Jewish culture and in the time of the day, in order to witness at court, you would need two people in order to vouch for each other to witness a crime or some transgression. Here, it's two people to witness Christ's ministry and to witness the gospel to others. This allowed accountability, it allowed a greater level of trust when these apostles gave an account. You'll also see any time that Jesus sends people out to proclaim the gospel or do works of mercy, that they are sent in twos. It's also, you know, basic safety. You know, when you have two people, it's safer than just one, but you also have that extra accountability. Now we'll move on to verse fourteen. "All these devoted themselves with one accord to prayer, together with some women, and Mary, the mother of Jesus, and his brothers." Again, there are two things here that we want to look at. "All these devoted themselves with one accord to prayer." In the last session, we've had the ascension of Christ. So Christ has ascended into heaven, said that he was going to send the Holy Spirit to the apostles. And this is the time of preparation for the early church. They have seen the risen and resurrected Christ, they've seen him ascend into heaven, and now they're waiting on their mission. They're waiting for the coming of the Holy Spirit. And during this time, just as they do today in confirmation, there's a time of prayer, of preparation to receive the Holy Spirit. And this also speaks of their community. One of the best ways to pray is in community, and it's bringing all of our hearts together for one common good, one common adoration of God. Secondly, we have the second half of this verse, "together with some women and Mary, the mother of Jesus, and his brothers." In Greek, this "together with" serves to emphasize association rather than mere accompaniment, and therefore, the solidarity of the disciples and the church as a whole going forward. So instead of these being tag-along people, the women and Mary, they are actually participators in this prayer, they are part of the community. Lastly, we have Mary, the mother of Jesus, and his brothers. A lot of people wonder how Mary, being a perpetual virgin, they could say that Jesus had brothers. Well, as we'll read, as we'll understand later, there are four kinds of brother or, you know, brethren in the Bible. One is by nature, second by race, third is by kindred, and the fourth is by love. For example, Peter and Jesus were brethren, or brothers, through love, because they had a love of one another. Then you have through race, Jesus and Peter were Jews, so they were brothers through race as well. So those are two examples of how brother could be used. Interestingly, in this verse, we, this is the last mention of Mary in sacred scripture. Out of all of the gospel writers, Luke is the most prominent in mentioning Mary. And if you want to understand her role in Christ's ministry and her kind of story along with Christ, Luke and this part of Acts are really a good place to look for something like that. Next, we are going to go into the next passage, which is the choice of Judas's successor. And this starts with verse fifteen, and we'll go to verse twenty-six of chapter one. "During those days, Peter stood up in the midst of the brothers. There was a group of about one hundred and twenty persons in the one place. He said, 'My brothers, the scripture had to be fulfilled, which the Holy Spirit spoke beforehand, through the mouth of David concerning Judas, who was the guide for those who arrested Jesus. He was numbered among us and was allotted a share in this ministry. He bought a parcel of land with the wages of his iniquity, and falling headlong, he burst open in the middle, and all of his insides spilled out. This became known to everyone who lived in Jerusalem, so that the parcel of land was called in their language Akeldama, that is, field of blood. For it is written in the book of Psalms, 'Let his encampment become desolate, and may no one dwell in it, and may another take his office. Therefore, it is necessary that one of the men who accompanied us the whole time the Lord Jesus came and went among us, beginning from the baptism of John until the day on which he was taken up from us, become with us a witness to his resurrection.' So they proposed two, Joseph, called Barsabas, who was also known as Justice, and Matthias. Then they prayed, 'You, Lord, who know the hearts of all, show which one of these two you have chosen to take the place in this apostolic ministry, from which Judas turned away to go to his own place. Then they gave lots to them, and the lot fell upon Matthias, and he was counted with the eleven apostles.'" So it's kind of a long passage, and there's a lot to unpack here. So we'll begin again in chapter one, verse fifteen. "During those days, Peter stood up in the midst of the brothers. There was a group of about one hundred and twenty persons in the place." This shows Peter's primacy. Peter is the first one to speak up, he is the first one to take charge. And you notice that there is no dissension to this. The apostles and the disciples around them, they know this. It's confirmed in their attitude that Peter is chosen by Christ to lead them and to act as the head of this new church. A lot of times, you'll find that Luke, in his Gospel and in Acts, because remember Luke wrote Acts, as Drew mentioned before, he likes to use allusions to the Old Testament to emphasize theology and to emphasize the fulfillment of the prophets and the typology that you will see in the Bible. One hundred and twenty people were there, almost one hundred and twenty people. Luke tends to emphasize meaning over literalness. So there could have been a hundred and ten, there could have been a hundred and thirty-five. But Luke uses that number to emphasize something, and you'll see this throughout all of Scripture, but Luke really likes to hammer it in. Twelve disciples, twelve apostles, excuse me, represent the twelve tribes of Judah, the twelve tribes of Israel. A hundred and twenty would represent both the twelve tribes of Israel. But also, there was this Jewish understanding that you would have a quorum, or ten men that would represent a community of prayer. So we have twelve communities of prayer represented here, which I mentioned typology, is supposed to represent the Old Testament tribes of Israel. These are the new tribes. And this, you'll see stuff like this throughout all of Scripture, where you'll have something like Mary being the new Eve, Jesus being the new Adam. Here, we have, you know, the old tribes of Israel, the new tribes of Israel in this new church. So we have Luke emphasizing that these hundred and twenty-odd people are the new tribes, they're the new church, and this is a body of prayer. So because numbers are really important in the Bible, they're not chosen slapdash, they're chosen for a purpose to represent something. The twelve apostles being the twelve tribes of the Israelites, because we lost Judas, which we'll see in the upcoming verse, that office needs to be fulfilled. So we'll move on to verse sixteen. "My brothers, the scripture had to be fulfilled, which the Holy Spirit spoke beforehand, through the mouth of David concerning Judas, who was the guide for those who arrested Jesus." The one thing here is that Peter is, through this speech he's making, is showing his understanding that Scripture is divinely inspired and guided by the Holy Spirit, which is actually a pretty big thing, because even this early in the church's development, they believed and held as true that the Holy Spirit guided these writings. And as we'll see in the Gospels, those, along with all the other things in the New Testament, are also divinely inspired. Then we go to verse seventeen. "He was numbered among us and was allotted a share in this ministry." So Christ chose the apostles, and he chose them to fulfill both this allusion to the twelve tribes of Israel. And these are ministries. And because Judas, in his betrayal of Christ and in his despair, gave up this ministry, a new one is to be had. So they're both trying to fulfill the prophecies in the Scripture, the idea of these tribes. "He was numbered among us and was allotted a share in this ministry. He bought a parcel of land with the wages of his iniquity, and falling headlong, he burst open in the middle, and his insides spilled out." So here, we have an account of the death of Judas. There are actually two accounts, one that we'll find in Matthew and one here in Acts. The one in Matthew asserts that upon Jesus's condemnation, Judas took the silver that he got for betraying him and flung it into the temple and went and hanged himself. The temple priests decided that they couldn't put it into the treasury for the temple, so the temple priests couldn't add it to the temple treasury, because it was essentially blood money, money spent on innocent blood. They decided to purchase a parcel of land, which they called Potter's Field, for the burial of foreigners. So of these two accounts, we can kind of get a bit of a picture, a truer picture of what might have happened during Judas's last moments. And because Luke tends to emphasize a more theological bent rather than a, you know, exact historicity, we can kind of take a few of those things with a grain of salt. So in chapter one, verse nineteen, he, oh no. So also, in this verse, we have a description of how he died. "Falling headlong, he burst open in the middle, and all his insides spilled out." This falling headlong hearkens back to wisdom. And one of the punishments for spilling innocent blood was to be knocked down, prostrate, and obliterated essentially. So Luke is using this allusion to wisdom to kind of underline the overall theology of this. So it doesn't really matter if this happened for sure, probably didn't. But understanding that Luke is using this to drive home a deeper point is useful here. So then we go on to verse nineteen. "This became known to everyone who lived in Jerusalem, so that the parcel of land was called in their language Akeldama, that is, field of blood." So as we talked about a little bit earlier, field of blood, the money, regardless of whether it was Judas himself who purchased the land, or the temple priests who purchased the land. It was blood money, it represented what might be said as the ultimate betrayal and a price that was put on Jesus's head. This hearkens back to Scripture, which we will see in the next verse, verse twenty. "For it is written in the book of Psalms, 'Let his encampment become desolate, and may no one dwell in it, and may another take his office.'" In chapter nineteen, we hear about what they did with that blood money that he got when he betrayed Jesus. "This became known to everyone who lived in Jerusalem, so that the parcel of land was called in their language Akeldama, that is, field of blood." So Potter's Field, which also hearkens back to an Old Testament passage, is where they would lay foreigners to rest, to bury them, because they couldn't be buried in a Jewish cemetery, because they were considered unclean. Verse twenty, "For it is written in the book of Psalms, 'Let his encampment become desolate, and may no one dwell in it, and may another take his office." Interesting here in this verse is that office in Greek is episkopos, which essentially means overlooker. And this word is where we get the words episcopate, episcopacy, and through modern variations, bishop. So bishop is essentially an office. And each one of these apostles was chosen by Christ to fill an office, a ministry, a priesthood, if you will, which is why when one was lost, another one needs to be found. Moving on to verse twenty-one. "Therefore, it is necessary that one of the men who accompanied us the whole time the Lord Jesus came and went among us." So here is a criteria that we have for the apostle to be, if you will. It needs to be a person that had witnessed Christ's ministry from the very beginning to the very end, from the baptism of John to his resurrection and his ascension into heaven. Verse twenty-two. "Beginning from the baptism of John until the day on which he was taken up from us, because with us a witness to his resurrection. So they proposed two, Joseph, called Barsabas, who was also known as Justice, and Matthias." Here, and many other places in the Bible, you're going to come across people that have two, three, maybe even four names. This has to do with the culture at the time, you had the Roman occupation, you had a lot of scholarly stuff was in Greek, you had the general name in Aramaic, it could be a nickname, it could be a middle name. So that's why we have so many names for one person, and it can kind of get confusing, but just know that it's, you know, more cultural and because of how they worked back then. Going on to verse twenty-four. It says, "Then they prayed, 'You, Lord, who know the hearts of all, show which one of these two you have chosen to take the place in this apostolic ministry, from which Judas turned away to go to his own place.'" So you could say this is one of the first prayers of the early church, one of the prayers of the proto-Christian community. Here, they're asking Christ, who had just ascended into heaven, to guide the choosing of this apostle. So they are saying, "We can't choose this person, because apostles were chosen by Christ." And this is a replacement for one that they had lost. So then we go to verse twenty-six. "Then they gave lots to them, and the lot fell upon Matthias, and he was counted with the eleven apostles." Here, drawing lots isn't just dumb luck or leaving it up to chance. In Hebrew, in Jewish tradition, drawing lots was how they chose the roles and duties of temple priests. So it's hearkening back to the ministry of the apostles as priests, the priestly mission that they have. And this was, in Jewish understanding, how God could divinely choose or interact with the choice of the next apostle. So that is the end of this second passage and the end of this particular session. But what we're left with is how does this link in with the overall narrative of Acts? And how does it link into our lives? Here, we see two things. In the beginning, we hear about the early times before Pentecost, but soon after Jesus's ascension, and how in this time of uncertainty and probably fearfulness, they turned to prayer, they turned to community, they turned to glorifying God together and focusing all of their hearts, all of their petitions as one. Secondly, we see how despair, how, you know, rejecting Christ's mercy can lead us to give up the wonderful gifts that he has given us. Judas's greatest sin wasn't betraying Christ. Judas's greatest sin was having despair of Christ's mercy. He didn't think he could be forgiven. And that forgiveness that God gives each and every one of us, he rejected it. And we need to do, we need to think of that in our own lives. Do we truly accept Christ's mercy? Do we allow ourselves to be forgiven? Do we ask for that forgiveness? Do we, are we certain of Christ's love and grace and understanding? And when things get rough, such as, you know, pandemic or natural disasters, do we try and separate ourselves, or do we come together as a community, whether it be in distance or in the same room? And do we count on God's providence to take care of us? Do we come together as one when things get the hardest for us? Do we turn inward, do we turn to despair? Or do we go out asking for help from our brothers and sisters in Christ? Do we ask for God's help? And so this early church, this proto-church, if you will, is a good example of what we need to do in crisis. I'm sure they were scared, I'm sure they were uncertain. I'm sure even with, you know, the great faith that the apostles and disciples had, they still might have feared for their lives, you never know. But the thing to remember is, is that they came together, they prayed, and they focused on God's love. So thank you again for joining us this session. Hopefully, you have enjoyed it. Next session will be Drew Stewart, who will be talking about Acts, Chapter two, and Pentecost. So we will see in that upper room just what they were preparing themselves for. And now that they have been made whole by a choosing of a new disciple, they will be prepared to receive the Holy Spirit. Thank you for joining us, please subscribe to our YouTube channel, leave a comment if you have any questions. We've got a YouTube email, if you want to send us an email. We've got a YouTube email, if you want to send us an email, leave a comment, any questions you have, we'll try to answer them in the next session. Have a blessed day, thank you.